January 5th, 2021. We are still operating under COVID restrictions for the foreseeable future. Do you want to call the roll Zach or do you want me to? Because I have the list. I can call it easily, whichever.
If you can, that'd be great.
Sure. Steve Hyder.
Here.
Greg Chamlean.
Here.
Lou Mayon.
Here.
Susan Milstein.
Here.
Paul Rosano.
Here.
Chip Ashworth.
He's muted.
He's muted, but he's here.
Well, let's tell them unmute. Tell them unmute. Chip, can you unmute yourself?
Here.
Okay, Chip's here and Peter Studos here. All seven board members are here. Zach, do you have any report for the Planning and Economic Development Department?
Nothing yet. Nothing from Sean.
Okay. We have three items on the agenda. They are all sketch plans. There will be no votes tonight. It'll just be a preliminary presentation from each of the three applicants. We welcome public comment, but it's not going to be tonight. If the after sketch plan, the applicant brings it back for concept approval, public comment at that time. First item on the agenda. 1111 Troy's Connected Road, Keeler Honda. Sketch plan review for the construction of a new Honda dealership building and associated parking on the site formerly occupied by a garden center. The construction of a single story building and associated parking for a collision center auto body shop. Conversion of the existing Honda building into Keeler pre-owned center and conversion of the existing collision center auto body shops into related facilities. The site is zone COR, which is commercial office residential. Zach, do you or any of the other department staff want to make any introductory comments?
Yeah, I'll start with it. This was TCC back in December of 2020. And there's a couple waivers that are going to be required here. The building setback exceeds a 25 foot major road and parking in the front yard is not allowed. A couple of things that we've noticed is the, as a recommendation from the planning department is the access road to River Road. We're not a huge fan of currently as the way it's proposed. And the other item that we were not a big fan of is the multi-use path actually going through the parking lot. We have easements along the Cumberland Farms property that's to the west of this site. And we're looking to do a connection to there to get us closer to the bike trail along the Mohawk River. But as of right now, the way it's configured, we're not a big fan because we don't want to send bicyclists or pedestrians through the parking lot. But other than that, I'll let Nick go ahead and jump in and start his presentation if he wants to start.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Zach. Good evening. Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering and Surveying. We had prepared the application for the proposed redevelopment of the former landscaping business that was located over on the westerly side of the campus. And also the redevelopment of this area that's now that's currently used as a parking area that would contain the new collision center and the new Maserati Alfa Romeo dealership. Zach, would it be possible for me to share the screen or is that?
Need me to show you?
I know I have some renderings that I have if I was able.
I will. Let me just do this real quick. Who can share a screen? I'll do it that way. Try. Go ahead, Nick. See if that worked. How about now?
Yeah, that works. Zach, that's good. So as it's shown here in the color rendition of the overall site, the overall site is about 50, almost 55 acres. It has frontage all along Route 7. And then it also has frontage along River Road down in this area right here. The site is developed. This area shown in white shows the current buildings that are developed on the site and the existing parking areas. And the new proposal for the Honda, the new Honda building is shown in this area right here. And this would be inventory parking and display would be out in the front. The existing Honda dealership is located in this building right here. So it would be relocated from this location to here. The Keeler Collision Center is being proposed to be located here. And the new Alfa Romeo Maserati dealership would be connected to the Collision Center and would be located, you know, within this footprint right here. And again, there's inventory parking, parking for service vehicles and inventory parking. And also some parking back here for the Collision Center. This, the parking in this area would be mostly for the Collision Center. As Zach mentioned, there is a connection to the Cumberland Farm. And we plan on using that drive, that access drive that was put in or planned during the analysis and the studies that was done for, that were done for the Cumberland Farm. So the access, there will be access from the light at the Cumberland Farm, at that intersection of Cumberland Farm and British American Boulevard. There will be ways of accessing the Keeler site from that site. As Zach mentioned, we are proposing an access drive along with a multi-use path. And this is the route that we've shown. We will be working with Zach and also Barton Le Judas. And also, you know, the applicant is looking to different ways to be able to safely root pedestrian and bicycle, you know, traffic down to River Road. So it's, you know, this was our initial proposal, but I think that this is going to evolve. By the way, with me tonight is also Sandy Keeler, sorry Sandy, and Patrick Ryan, who's the manager of the facility. They are here in attendance with me. So you know, later on, when we get into some questions, they'll be able to help me maybe answer some of those questions. So that's the, that's the proposal that we have, you know, and that we've shown this overall sketch plan. We do have the rendering of the Collision Center in a large fashion. And as you can see, this is the Collision Center here, and this is the Alfa Romeo Maserati building. And the Honda is right here. The access points from Route 7 would remain where they're located. Previously, there was a Ronald Drive was located right here. And the Hewitts Landscaping occupied this area. And there was another access drive that's shown right here that will remain. And here also is the, you know, the access drive that we're planning to get vehicles out to Route 7. So that's the renderings of the, of the, of the site. There is sanitary sewer. There's water, obviously, all along Route 7. We, for stormwater, we're planning on using, there's, there's a lot of sandy material, sandy soils here. We're planning on doing some additional investigation, but we're, we're looking at porous pavement along with some infiltration basins, you know, for both sides, not just for the westerly site, but also for this site. We're planning on doing some porous pavement and also some infiltration basins. The buildings, I want to give you just a quick view of what the building, the Honda building looks like. This is a corporate, you know, corporate type building that, you know, is generated by Honda and this is what has to be built. These panels right here that are shown with the little dashes, those are all glass. And then there's metal panels. I also want to show you the Alfa Romeo Maserati. You know, this is one elevation of the, of how that building is going to look. Obviously, this building is going to be joined by the Collision Center, which sits in the back here. But this, this is again, a drawing that's generated by the Maserati Alfa Romeo designers. And we just wanted to show you what that looks like. So the other, the other part of the, of the proposal that we, that we have here is that right through here, from, from a projection of this line right here to somewhere in this area right here, this, this parcel is split zone. It's zone COR up in this area. But then from that, from that line on back, it's zone single family residential. So we are proposing to do three residential lots. And at this time, all we're doing, all we're proposing is a minor subdivision to, to show those, those three lots. There was a house that set in this general area here that, that was moved. Sandy, that was moved over to here on River Road?
Yes, it was.
Yeah. Right, right from Route 7. It was, it was brought down and moved and, and, you know, placed on River Road. That's just a little history about the use of the site. So again, all the utilities are in place. We're extending laterals. Actually, there's already laterals that were abandoned that we may be able to use for, for this. But over in this area, we're not aware of any laterals. You know, we'll probably have to put in laterals. So that pretty much gives us a general overview of what the proposal is, you know, from the applicant. If, if there are any questions, we'd be more than happy to try to answer those.
Okay, thank you. This, as with most of our projects, this project is being reviewed by our town designated engineer. In this case, it's the company called Barton and Le Judas. Is Brad Grant the one that's here for?
Yeah, Brad's supposed to be here. Is he in?
There he is, there he is.
Yes, I'm under, I got an alias named Zach Harrison in my box, but I'm here.
Ah, there he is.
Brad, could you give us your preliminary comments on this? I know you haven't completed your formal review, but tell us your thoughts so far.
Well, I'm happy to hear that porous pavement will be considered. Soils out of that end of the, of the town are typically amenable, but investigations will be required. The less stormwater runoff that goes downhill, which would be to the north and east, the better. On Northwood Drive, that residential street that ends in a cul-de-sac below the site, the westerly part of the site, there's been some significant erosion damage in a couple of the drainage courses and putting sediment in some culverts downstream. So it's kind of at a precarious point now. So careful, careful design, particularly on the west end. We'll hopefully combine with infiltration and some storage mechanisms, perhaps underground chambers. We'll make sure that we don't increase the amount of runoff down there. But the town may have some remaining work downstream of Northview Drive. Further to the east, there's a couple of drainage ravines that end up one off-site, one on that combine and go under River Road. There's likely going to be additional stormwater runoff to that. That needs management for peak flow control. Again, really excited to hear that porous pavement is a possibility on this site. Minimize areas for infiltration basins and your practice is under payment serving a greater purpose. The path, the bike path is of great interest as it connects to River Road, which just a short stretch down River Road, you connect to the Mohawk Hudson Trail in itself. Due to the slope between the developed Keeler property and River Road, it's going to take some careful design because not only are bikes going to go up it, but bikes are going to go down it and steep slopes and bikes don't always get along too well. So what is shown is a fairly straight shot up the hill. Because in a logical sense, it would follow the access road proposed. But as Zach was saying, if there is a consideration to doing away with that road, then the path can take a more serpentine path and greater length means less slope and less dangers. Understand there's three lots proposed. Do have a number of concerns with a, with a private road going up there. 24 feet wide would need a drainage system. And I wonder aloud here, is that third lot worth the construction of that road versus just having two driveways over River Road? I'm not proposing to answer that now, but I throw that question out that the cost of that road and drainage infrastructure isn't going to be cheap. And perhaps that middle area is best dedicated to the trail, but that remains to be seen. So yeah, we are looking for as low a slope of trails we can get. You know, it will have some steep sections. The drainage ravine stability, you know, controlling the peak flow in the orifices on the porous pavement, storage mechanisms. You know, pay careful attention. It is a redevelopment project which affects the provision of water quality practices, but water quantity is of great importance here. The culverts down at River Road may require some cleaning before or after this project. And that may be something the town is interested in the applicant helping them with. And that's generally it, Pete. Have to go down and look at those Maseratis when they're there.
Okay, we'll hear from the board members now. You raise some good issues. Obviously, the bike path, whether that's going to actually be a private road or not. And the drainage is obviously going to be very important. We're going to want to make sure that the neighbors are not impacted negatively. I'm confident in the end, the engineering will win over with that, but it's going to be a, I'm sure the neighbors are going to be concerned, so we'll have to talk to them about it and have a general education and feedback from them as well.
Yeah, we are concerned.
Yeah. Sure. Understood. Okay, Chief Hyder?
Yeah, just a couple of things. One thing I'm a little confused about. Zach was talking about the access to the west. He implied that that was part of an easement to the town. But the way Nick is talking, that's going to be their route to get to Route 7. Nick, can you square that away?
Yeah, sure, Chief. That is, that easement to the town was, was given for the purpose of having, of enabling this parcel to connect to the entrance road that leads to the light, to the traffic light at Route 7. So that, the purpose of that easement was to make this connection. As you know, the board, you know, the town has been looking to do connections between parcels. The traffic doesn't go out to Route 7 or to Wolf Road or to other places. So the intention and the study that were done for Cumberland Farm were followed up by the placement of that easement.
All right. Well, that brings me to my two points then, is that easement big enough for a multi-use path as well as the traffic pattern?
You know, we, we have, Chief, we haven't, we have to do a little more homework on that easement, the topography that that easement traverses. So at this time, I really can't answer that without us having done a little bit more analysis and study of where that path, which the path that it would take to the access road.
All right. So in the event of you do get that straightened out, then I would suggest that you don't need two curb cuts onto Route 7 for the Honda. You've got the curb cut that obviously goes out to the traffic light on Albany Shaker, which is farther down. You now have a rear exit out to Route 7. That way, I don't see the need for two more. And I realize they're already there, but I don't see the need for keeping both. I think you could either put one in the middle or keep one at one end of the other. But I'm not too sure you need them both at that point. As to the access road in the back, I'm sure the River Road people are going to be happy with it. I mean, in actuality, we all have to admit that we know Keeler utilizes River Road for test drives, for mechanic drives, and we've known that for years. Not that everybody wants it, but we know what happens. What this, on a positive note, what this road would do, the access road, would keep traffic off of Route 7, off of Rosendale and off of the upper end of River. That's about the only positive it brings. The key though is it's still going to funnel all that traffic out of Keeler, just out the back, making it easier for Keeler to get to River Road, you know. And I bore the board for one second. You know, this site's a beautiful site. Keeler has maintained it very well. The buildings are beautiful. But it's a little like the historical section of Charleston, South Carolina. Everybody's familiar with the buggy rides down there. Or anybody who hasn't been down there knows that you don't get to pick where your buggy ride goes. You go to a central station, the city code that dictates which way you turn. And it's almost like it would be neat if something could be done with Keeler here so that all their test drives and all their mechanical drives aren't all heading in the same direction. You know, and that's the purpose for that city code in Charleston. You know, I'm not saying that Keeler's like Charleston, but what I'm afraid of is that if there's anybody at all that's going out of Keeler that wants to go a certain direction, they're going to head down to River Road. And I just don't see that as a plausible roadway at that point. That's all from me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, good comments. Craig Chamlean?
Yeah, kind of piggybacking on what Chief was talking about. How many total curb cuts are in front of this entire property now, Nick? Do you know?
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, six, and seven.
Okay. I mean, I'm not going to belabor the point, but I agree with Chief that you should be able to cut down on the number of curb cuts associated with here, especially given the fact that you're going to have access presumably to both lights, to two lights. And then if you throw in the rear access, I mean, there's a tremendous amount of access to this site. I don't, I don't think you're going to need as, need all that many curb cuts. What, what is the plan for the existing Honda building?
That's, that's going to be converted to some additional space for inventory, storage, Sandy.
The building will be used for pre-owned.
Pre-owned. I'm sorry, pre-owned. That, that particular building will be, become the pre-owned center.
Okay. And then?
You're not changing the building?
No.
Okay.
And what, it looks, the other, now to the Maserati building. It looks like the setback on that building is quite a bit less than this proposed setback on the Honda building? What is, what is the setback on the Maserati building?
Let's see. Craig, I'd say it's like 40, 40, 45 feet.
Okay. I mean, I guess just, and I understand that, you know, the property does kind of a jog there, but obviously you've been before us enough to know that we want these buildings pushed back to some extent as far as practical. We're not in favor of buildings up on the road.
Yeah. Craig, just, so, you know, we really can't push this building any further back. As you can see, the property line is, is right back here where I'm pointing right now. So, you know, in, in the Fallon Pharmacy, which is next door, that building, you can see the, just barely the, the corner of that building. And you see that, you know, we have it pushed a little bit behind that also. But, you know, we can certainly look at, you know, refine that as we, as we move along with the design.
Yeah, I mean, I get that perhaps you can't push the building in its current configuration and current size back any further, but maybe the configuration can change or perhaps the size can change. So I'm just drawing that out there right now.
Okay.
Can you, can you go over exactly where these three residential lots are?
Yeah, sure. So you can see my screen, right, Craig?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's one right here. Then there's another one right here that, that the house would sit back here somewhere. And then there's one right here. So it's one, two, three.
And what is the, what is the plan for any of the remaining land? Is there a plan? Is there any even thought of additional anything?
No, I think that, I think that's why we, we came in and initially, when we started working on this, Craig, we were working on the Honda in the Keeler Center. And then Maserati Alfa Romeo came into the picture. Recent, I think that it was late November, late November, you know, that came into the picture. And then we looked at the entire site, Craig, and we said, you know, we want to do an application that's all inclusive. And, you know, there was some talk about doing some lots back here. And we said, well, you know, we should really do those at this time so that there's no segmentation or there's no, you know, question about somebody saying, oh geez, you know, you never brought that to light, you know. So with looking at the path and the, and the access road, we thought it was best to, you know, plan it all out. There really isn't any, any future plans for this area. It's a, there are some flat areas, but it's mostly, you know, sloped area that runs towards the ravine here. So I, I don't, I don't think that, Sandy, if I, you know.
The topography is too difficult and it's, my intention is to leave it for a while.
Okay. All right. And then the last thing is, I mean, I, I agree with Chief on, on this rear access drive. I think that I think that we're going to hear a lot of, a lot of complaints from people that live down on River Road. And honestly, I, even without them, I, I, I'm not sure I'm in favor of that rear access. I mean, because I do think it's going to push. I don't want to say every, every test drive, but I mean, I, I think you're going to end up with even more traffic on River Road than you have now. That's it.
Thanks, Chris.
Lou Mayon, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I kind of agree with everything that's already been said. I think we need to reduce the curb cuts out on 7 based on the rest of the way we're getting in and off the property. And I'm really not keen on a road going down back through, down to River Road. I'd much rather see that to be a path, but I want, I would like to see it as a path, not going through the parking lot. If it could be arranged to come into it from some other direction and just be a bike path, walking path, but not a road. I agree with everything everybody else has said.
Steven Milstein?
I agree with everything that's been said, and I was going to make the same comment about, you know, is that really supposed to be a road or is it supposed to be if, to really help be for bikers and walkers? And in which case, I think number one, it should be relocated. Number two, make sure that it's just. Um, for that purpose and not an access road. So whether it's a path, whether it's blocked off, um, then I. Um, then I'd be in favor of it.
Thank, thank you. Paul Rosano?
Uh, Nick, on those uh three proposed minor subdivision, um, those houses do get built. And the access road gets built. It's a lot of ifs.
Right.
Would the driveways, would it be set up so the driveways would enter from the access road, not from River Road? Because we tried to eliminate as many uh driveways onto that, that's kind of tight down there. It's a wicked turn. Uh, would that be considered in the future not to have those driveways come out on River Road, go basically into the um. Access road.
Yeah, no, they, they, it certainly can be.
Especially, I mean, the third one has to.
Right, right.
Now, as far as the building, uh, the very first building, um, down in the corner here of the new one.
Yeah.
Right there, yeah. If you were to just to flip that over, uh, and then you could physically actually move it back. Uh, or reorientate it like Craig said, to get it further off the road if you just flipped it. So that the, the spot that the T I call it, or the L.
Right.
On the other direction and you actually, yeah, and you could actually move it back further uh and not have it right out on the road.
Yeah.
Um, I agree with the curb cuts. I. I'm happy that you would have access to two lights. I think it's, I think it's a, a big deal. Uh, the access road, I don't know whether if it do gets, does get built, if that can be restricted strictly to Keeler and make them accountable. For the amount of trips in and out from their dealership. Uh, but that's something we could talk about maybe later on. That's it, Peter.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Paul.
Just a quick, uh, Mr. Rosano, just a quick, uh, why, the logic behind having the Keeler's uh Collision Center here is that. It's a, it's adjacent to the car wash. There's a car wash right here and we want it to be uh close by, but we can certainly take a look at it. And if it, if it functions, uh, you know, okay, uh, we, we'll certainly take a look at that.
Okay, uh, Chip Ashworth?
Yeah, I think if you rotated that uh collision building like 180 so that your, your bump out is in the other direction. Can figure some, the building some way so you still have a showroom out in front.
Right.
But how many, how many showrooms do you have?
Well, there's a, there's the Honda, uh, there's the, there'll be the uh pre-owned uh, uh, right here. Then there's a BMW. Uh, Mercedes, uh, and uh, uh, the Mini and uh. And it'll be the Alfa, Alfa Romeo Maserati.
So you got basically five showrooms, I think, right?
Yeah, that, 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 that's correct. One, two, three, four, uh, five, yeah, five or six, uh, Chip.
Okay, so my thought is, since you're not doing some of these buildings over, but. You are going through all this uh rehabilitating some, some parts of this campus. Why don't you put um electric vehicle charging stations in front of each of the showrooms? And put, at least put in the infrastructure because in another 20 years, half the cars sold are going to be electric.
Yeah, and, and, and that's going to be done, uh, Chip. Uh, it, it will show that on, on, uh, as the plan develop, uh. Uh, that the, the electric vehicle charging stations are, are very, very popular and uh. Uh, most of these uh manufacturers are going to have uh electric vehicles. Uh, very, you know, uh, sooner than we, we anticipated or, or we estimated. I think that. Uh, I've seen some uh models from BMW, Mercedes uh already out there. So. Um, it, it, it's, yeah, that's a good, you know, good suggestion, Chip. Thank you.
Yeah, and as a aging cyclist, the more traverses on that trail, the better.
Uh, okay, I'll, I'll give my comments. I think uh all the comments got out there. I'll just rattle through them quickly. That I, stormwater is going to be important and I'm sure we can work that out, but there'll be engineering that'll be done to ensure that that's the case. I agree with all the comments on curb cuts. Um, so I think that needs, needs a little work and a hard look from our TD and our staff. Um, the uh resident, the, the bike path, I think, needs work as well. Um, and we, we've all, all been discussing that. Maybe it can go entirely through the green space and not go into the lot. Uh, I'm not sure. But I know the staff's taken, been taking a hard look at that as well. And Zach, if you have anything, please, uh, please jump in.
Yeah.
As that gets, let me, I'll just make my final comment and then if anybody, Zach or the TD have any comments. Um, the residential lot, lots look a little bit sort of jammed up and I'm not sure where that uh. I'm also opposed to a ro, a driveway road back there. I think I, just having the uh bike path would be better. Um, I'm not sure if three lots is the right number or two residential lots, but I'll, I'll, I'll leave that as an open issue. Uh, those are the end of my comments. Zach, I don't know if you want to add anything about your thoughts on the, the bike path or anything else.
Sean and I visited the site today. Um, and we were looking through it. I, as the plan develops, obviously we'll work with Nick. And um, we'll also get a part with the CDT C and uh our engineering staff to see if there's anything, a, a better solution that we may prefer. Um, and just real quick, if, just regarding if that access road did go in. And any of those road, or any of those single-family homes had access off them, all of them would require an ODA. These are not accessing off the town road. So that's just one implement that would, would cause if we haven't come off, if that access road gets built.
Right.
So, uh, it's going, I are going to work with that, work with um Nick and the CDT C and our engineering staff to, you know, kind of look into more of a. Uh, maybe a better solution for the bike path. Um, because we have the easement behind Cumberland Farms. And we can possibly get the connection to River Road through this project, which would be nice.
Yeah, and, and Zach, uh, you know, uh, as I mentioned, when I first uh opened up tonight, uh. Uh, we look forward to uh working with you and, and I think the applicant uh is committed to uh making that uh. Connection a reality. Uh, so uh, if we need to meet out in the site and walk in and, and look at different areas. Uh, we, we definitely, you know, we definitely are open to that and uh, uh, we, we want to do that, so.
Perfect. That's all I got, Pete.
Peter, I, I have one other quick question for Nick. So Nick, currently, I believe the pre-owned. Is in the building that would be to the west of the Maserati, right there where the, where the cursor is. What, what's the plan for that building?
I'm not sure. Uh, but I'll ask Sandy because he's, he's sitting next to me. Uh, Sandy, is there a plan for uh this, uh, you know, where the, the used vehicles are? Yeah, pre-owned?
At this moment, there's nothing other than, uh, I think we considered putting a cafeteria in there so that, uh, we cut down the number of. Employees that would be going off-site using Route seven, which is uh pretty lethal at that traffic light. And keep them on the site for their own safety and, and to reduce the traffic on Route seven.
Okay, all right. I did, I was just curious because you, you were going to move the pre-owned to the existing Honda building, right? Okay.
That's right, that's correct.
Peter, I got one more question. Sure, Paul.
Um, if we're going to reduce curb cuts, how is that going to restrict deliveries of uh vehicles? Uh, I can't imagine if some of these, if some of these curb cuts come out, uh, how are they going to get in and out of this campus if we're reducing them? Uh, is that, is that a consideration? Are they needed now for delivering? So in the future, if we took them out, is that going to cause these trucks to have to basically drive through the campus to get to the proper dealership?
Well, that's, that's certainly something that we'll have to take a look at, uh, Mr. Rosano. It's a good point. Uh, and, and both uh Patrick and Sandy are very well aware of the uh traffic pattern on, on the site. Uh, so the truck pattern uh on the site. So, um, you know, when uh. Uh, we work with Barnard Judas and the CDT C, uh, and I'm not sure it's CDT C, but mostly Barnard Judas. Uh, and uh, they make a suggestion as to which one of the access drives, uh, you know, they, they think should be uh removed. Uh, you know, we'll, we'll have to, we'll have to take a look at that and see how it affects the, the truck traffic.
Would that, also with that, if that happens, would you have like a main staging area? Say in the rear of the property where those parking areas, and maybe all the cars would be dropped off there and picked up there? Uh, that might eliminate some of the issue with the truck driving all the way through, back and forth throughout the dealership.
Yeah.
That's, that's it for now.
Thank you.
Okay, everybody set? Okay, thank you. We look forward to uh seeing you if you come back and there's obviously some work to do and we look forward from the residents as well.
Yeah. Peter, I got one quick question. When is the next uh meeting that the residents can share comments or ask questions?
Uh, I, I, we, we don't know. I, I honestly, because they're going to revise the plans and they haven't even submitted.
Yeah, the, yeah, the challenge, the challenge that we, yes.
I can respond that for you. So the next step is for concept review. So one, when, when the applicant actually submits the concept review, which could be. Months, year, we're not sure. Soon as we get that, we actually will send out notifications for it.
Sure, all right. Well, the reason I ask is that we don't, we would like to be able to give you guys input on the, a couple of things. The bike path, uh, because that seems to be a reoccurring issue every time there's some sort of project that comes up. There's always somebody looking to drive a bike path through the neighborhood. And secondarily, just wanted to get some clarification on the road because to your point, you know, you're going to dump potentially a lot of traffic down there. And if you combine that with people on bikes, you know, it's already, you got people doing 45, 50 miles an hour down there and you start putting bikes down on River Road.
Okay, you, you're going to have plenty of opportunity.
Yeah, all right. Just want to know whether we will.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda, 616 Columbia Street Extension Mini Mart Restaurant. Sketch plan review for construction of 4,000-foot building containing a 2,000 uh square foot mini mart and 2,000 square foot restaurant. With drive-through and eight fueling stations. The site is go, zone core, commercial, office, residential.
Perfect.
Um, and uh, yeah, Zach, do you have any introductory comments before?
Yeah, I'll just kind of state what we have here. Um, this had a DCC meeting back in November. Um, with the town departments and the town designated engineer. Currently, as it's shown, three waivers are going to be required if building setback exceeds 25-foot major road setback. Parking is not allowed in the front yard and within the core district, the fuel canopy cannot be in the front yard. So those are our three waivers that we have. Um, one thing that was brought up during the DCC meeting was the site distance analysis for the curb cut along Johnson Road. And um, the Pure Waters Department has a possible issue with the sanitary connection as shown, so that there'll have to be some redesign there.
Um, oh, switch curb cut?
Yeah, uh, Nick, if you can zoom in on your, it's a long Johnson Road.
Okay. It's, it's this one right here.
Yeah, and um, it, it just a couple of things that we looked into is possibly the way that it's shown banking some of the parking there. You know, looking into the, the land use law, um, they meet the parking requirements of a restaurant and the mini mart. Um, but banking of some of the parking closer to the intersection of Columbia Street and Johnson Road is kind of where we're leaning for. And then I'll let Nick go into his presentation.
Okay. Okay, thank, thank you, Zach. Uh, good evening, uh, Nick Costa again, uh, from Advanced Engineering and uh. This is a, this is a site, a 2.39 acre site that's located at um, the, the intersection or the point here. Uh, where Johnson Road uh and Columbia Street uh come together. Um, the site is um a zone, commercial, office, residential. Uh, and uh, the applicant uh is proposing to uh develop a. Uh, mini mart with a fast food restaurant and the uh, uh, fueling uh canopy. Uh, you know, as, as my pointer uh shows here, uh, and this is the building uh that it, that it would uh. Uh, occupy. Uh, and, and as Zach said, you know, uh, we have shown quite a bit of parking to meet the. Uh, the, the requirements, but it is a mixed use. Uh, so uh, the applicant doesn't, you know, does not, is not in opposition to. Uh, bank these uh, uh, these parking spaces and the, and these driver, and the drive aisle here. Um, you know, uh, and, and I think we, we can work that out uh with planning and, and uh, the town designated engineer. Um, it, you know, I, I don't, I don't see uh us uh having an opposition to that. That, you know, the site was formerly, um, uh, it, it, there's still a, a portion of, of a building here. Uh, it was a stand, but I, I think that at one time there was uh more than the stand. I think it was a, a, a little uh farmhouse uh, uh, that occupied this space. Um, there are uh utilities uh along uh, uh, water, water uh along here and also water along here. Uh, and, and sanitary sewer, we're, we're going to a sanitary sewer manhole that's located here. Uh, and, and, and during the sketch plans, you know, we've shown that uh we can get into the sewer uh by crossing uh this road. Uh, and we have to do some additional studies as, as Zach mentioned, uh, because um. Uh, Pure Water, Pure, Pure Water wants to confirm that we're actually able to get to that point. Um, let me show you the enlarged rendering of it. Uh, so uh, as I, as I was saying. You know, uh, we don't have any issues with, with banking uh all of these spaces here. Um, and um. Um, you know, the utilities, as I was saying, the sanitary sewer comes across and then uh goes into the building at this end of the building. Um, the building uh does have a drive-through, so we've shown, uh, you know, a drive uh with, with the. Uh, queuing and um, you know, the restaurant would be located on, on this end of the, of the building. And uh, it, it would, uh, it would be, um, um, you know, the, the pickup window would be over in this area right here. And then the rest of the building uh would be utilized for uh, um, as a mini mart. So there's some parking, parking in the front uh for both the restaurant. And, and the, and the mini mart. Um, uh, the, the gas, uh, underground gas, uh, uh, tanks would be located here. Uh, so the truck can come in uh and, and, and dispense and, and go out or come in and dispense and go out. Uh, so this, this is the drive uh from uh Columbia Street, which is up in it. You know, right opposite this existing drive, uh, you know, from uh. Uh, the, the, it's right, right in this area right here, this building right here, that office building uh has, has an access drive that would, you know, that would be. Opposite of, of each other. And then this drive is to Johnson Road. Now, there's been some discussion uh in, in the DCC meeting. Um, there was some talk about actually having the drive go straight across and, and we'll be looking at that and uh. So the next time you, you see this plan, it'll probably have some uh, uh, changes uh to it uh as far as where the location of this drive is. Um, and, and hopefully that'll also take care of the site distance concerns uh that the DPW had. Um, the, the, the site um does uh, uh, require a zoning uh board of appeals uh. Um, uh, uh, variance in that uh, the, the building is within uh. Uh, the, the, uh, the, the setback uh, the, from, from a res, this is the zone line, the, the zoning line for single-family residential and commercial office residential. Uh, and the, and then it turns up the center line of uh Johnson Road and right at this corner, uh, you know, we're within that. Um, that radius, uh, that, um, uh, so we, we'll be seeking um a, a variance uh for being in the. Uh, you know, within, within that uh, 150 or 200 feet uh that's required. Uh, so um. The, you know, the site meets the green uh space uh requirements. Uh, uh, there are some wetlands. Uh, New York State DC uh wetlands, they're located, they're highlighted here. Um, and um. So, uh, if there, well, another improvement, you know, one, one improvement that this uh, uh, this site is making is that. It will connect a sidewalk to uh the intersection here. The intersection was recently improved by uh. Uh, the development that happened uh with the, the ACO building that was built uh over in this area. So the intersection and the light. Uh, the configuration all, all changed and the, and the uh crosswalks were installed and uh we are putting a sidewalk uh that, that brings you over to. Uh, you know, to the, to the building. Uh, so if, if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them. I, also with me tonight is Bill Fitzgerald, who's, who represents the uh, uh, the developer or the applicant. So uh, I turn it over to the board.
Uh, okay, as with the last project, we have a town designated engineer uh reviewing this on behalf of the board. In this case, it's CHA Companies. Joe Grasso, could you offer us your preliminary comments?
Sure, Pete, can you hear me good?
Yes.
All right, so um, so.
All right, so, so, so thanks for the opportunity to give our comments. We haven't issued a formal review letter because we're only at sketch plan review, but we have reviewed the plan, gone out to the site and attended the DCC meeting. And I'll try to start from a higher level and then kind of drill down into some, some of the more specific issues. So first of all, you know, understanding the proposed use, you know, which is fitting for a site like this because this, this site is in a very high traffic corridor, which makes it an attractive site for, you know, a mini mart and a what we would assume would be a fast food restaurant with a drive-through. So we understand why, why the use could fit the site location. But we've got some concerns about the intensity of the use on the site and the general layout of the of of the parking areas that are, would be supported to support the proposed uses at the sizes shown. And and although, you know, we, it sounded like there was some immediate jump to land banking parking, what we, what we want to make sure is that if if the site needs the parking per code, that the, that the parking that would need to be built would be in appropriate locations and provide, you know, logical flow between parking areas and the buildings. And that's something that we, we see, you know, with this plan, there's a lot of parking areas spread throughout the perimeter of the site, very distant from, you know, a convenience store or a fast food restaurant. And, you know, based on the amount of circulation that we're going to see around, you know, a canopy and gas pumps, there's going to be a lot of conflicting movements between the pedestrians that are trying to get to the, to the, to the store. You know, and vehicles that are trying to circulate around the site. So we've got a lot of safety concerns, you know, regarding the parking line alignments. You know, the, you know, something to be considered is whether or not we're looking at the right density of the site in terms of the, the size of the proposed building, the various uses, as well as the size of the canopy, because obviously the bigger, the bigger it gets built, the more traffic is expected to to be generated. From an access standpoint, you know, we are, as of right now, in favor of a curb cut onto Columbia Street Extension. And the location that it's proposed, we do feel like that curb cut, if it gets approved in that location, would have to be a rights and rights out. We would definitely not want lefts in at that location or lefts out. So that that would, if it's going to be considered by the board, we would recommend that that be considered for rights and rights out only. And then in terms of the curb cuts on Johnson Road, you know, Nick pointed to a comment that we had raised during DCC regarding we kind of, we have to kind of look at the how, how traffic is expected to flow through the site. And there could be merits to building a second curb cut on Johnson Road. Basically in line with that, the access drive that goes, it cuts across the front of the, the building, in between the building and the, and the fueling pumps. We should look at the merits of that to see if it would, you know, do a better distribution of trips and reduce some of those car pedestrian conflicts that we, that we talked about earlier. You know, Nick touched on the truck circulation pass, you know, not only for the, we have to look at it from a, you know, tanker, a fueling tanker circulation, but any other large vehicles that want to come into the site and stop at the convenience store or restaurant as well as for fuel. So we have to take a close look at that. In terms of the wetlands, you know, we appreciate that Nick has already gone out there and delineated what we assume are DC jurisdictional wetlands on the site, which is great information to have this early in the process. The plan does show the hundred foot wetland buffer, which is a regulated buffer on DC wetlands. And I believe that that's also the limit of the CMAB protected area. But the, one of the concerns that we have is that the stormwater management areas on the plan is proposed within that hundred foot buffer. And that's something that we are always, you know, raises environmental concerns because that buffer is there for a purpose and it's to, it's to provide that undisturbed protection between development and the, and the wetlands. So, so we would frown on use of that buffer, even though it's only proposed for stormwater management. So, you know, we got to take a, a close look at that. The, the plan obviously shows a drive-through around the back of the site. That causes, you know, some of the circulation concerns that we have regarding how traffic is going to flow and the amount of traffic that's going to be circulating through the site. So we've got a general concern with the fact that there's a, a drive-through proposed. If it is something that is supported by the board, we should look at the need for a bypass lane. Because obviously the, the, the access drive, a south side of the building, you know, is restricted to one lane and, and vehicles could get stuck in there and not be able to get out until they get further, further behind the building. Nick touched on, and Zach, I think, mentioned the site distance concerns along Johnson Road. That's something that we'll need to take a look at for any of the curb cuts on Johnson Road. Will also, you know, based on the amount of trips that this project is going to generate, need to take a look at the traffic queues that are occurring up at that intersection of Columbia Street and, and Johnson Road to see if those queues are going to impact that curb cut to the west there. And if they do, it adds more credence to, you know, building possibly another curb cut further to the, to the east, like I had mentioned before. Regarding the pedestrian connectivity, you know, the connection up to the corner is good and Nick raised that in his comments. We, you know, based on typical commercial developments in the town, that the, the town through the site plan review process will generally require applicants to build sidewalks along the site's entire frontage, even if if that frontage extends beyond the area that they're going to develop. Obviously, that's a, it's going to be a big lift for this site because the site has extensive frontage, both on on Columbia Street Extension as well as Johnson Road. But that's something that we, that we would support. And in terms of how those site works, sidewalks are designed, they really should be located out along the, the public right of way so that they're providing a public purpose and not solely to the benefit of the, of the development. And if you look at the sidewalk that's proposed on the, the north side of the parking along Columbia Street Extension, you know, based on the location of that sidewalk, it's really not in a location where it's going to be viable for future extensions of that sidewalk to the east. And we would rather have that be built down along the right of way. And then with short spurs that come into the site from, from those right of way segments. Let's see, we, we we know that Nick and Zach both talked about the issues regarding the sewer that was raised by Pure Waters, but we're confident that, you know, Nick is, Nick's office has gone through these types of sewer designs before. We're there to look at various, various analyses that satisfy Pure Waters and whether or not this, this sewer will be public or private. And we're confident that Nick's going to be able to, you know, and engineer his way through that issue. See if I have any other comments at this time. So the site is within the bout road Columbia Street G I S study area. So it will be responsible for, you know, mitigation of cumulative impacts in accordance with the findings for that study. You know, including traffic related impacts. And the architecture of the building, obviously, it's a, it's going to be a highly visible site and we would, you know, strongly encourage, you know, quite a bit of effort be put into the look of the, of the building as part of the concept application. So that the board can, you know, weigh in on any concerns regarding the architectural design of the, of the, not only the building, but of the canopy as well. So those are our, you know, more significant comments that we've got so far at Sketch Plan Review, Pete.
Okay, excellent comments and you've given us a lot to think about. Craig, did you want to say something before we took comments?
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be recusing myself on this project, Pete.
Okay, well, we'll go in reverse order that we went last time. Chip, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, my basic concern is the, it's a Johnson Road side of this, of this point. Because the cars eastbound on Columbia that make a right onto Johnson are really ripping when they come through there. And I almost think that, that, that the, and the lot is, the line sight from the driveway as it exists now is very poor. And I almost say if it, you have to move it quite a ways down, otherwise it should be right in, right out. You wouldn't, you wouldn't want people stopping traffic and then trying to make a left going into there or coming out and trying to make a, you know, a left coming out of there on the Johnson side.
Okay, anything else? Good comments? Paul Rosano?
Hey, Nick, how do you plan on handling, handling snow storage on the site? I've got two questions. That's the first one.
Yeah, I think that, you know, some of it is going to get pushed up, obviously into the green spaces. You know, the, the, these areas are shown in green, you know, they lend themselves to, you know, pushing in, in, you know, again, pushing that way and, and, you know, that, that's all that there is for storage, you know, if we turn this area into green, obviously that would be a large area. You know, they would, they would have some storage capacity.
Okay, so that would mean that we wouldn't be looking at the rear of the property where we were the back, the back of the building in the wetland buffer for pushing snow. That wouldn't happen, right?
No, I, you know, if we're not going to be putting in any, and even if we were putting in the stormwater there, they, the, we're not, again, they're not allowed, you know, the applicant is not allowed to push snow, even if these were stormwater facilities. The Stormwater Office always makes a comment and there's, you know, there's signs that maybe even have to be put up to say, you know, you know, snow can't, snow can't go into the stormwater areas. So we would definitely not want the, the snow going into the, the wetlands. The hundred foot buffer ends up being, you know, right here. So it's, it's, you know, then it, you know, this entire area is really off limits.
Okay, the second question I have is now, it's a four thousand square foot building overall. Is that a branding issue where the size of the building is determined by the lack of a better word, the vendor? Or is that arbitrary? The building could be maybe skinnier or smaller or?
We, we can certainly, we can certainly discuss that with the applicant. I, I know that the applicant is committed to the fast food restaurant, you know, there's a certain size that they were looking for. The rest of it is going to be operated by the applicant and we can certainly discuss with him. And also as he develops the, the floor plan, you know, we, we, we can discuss with him, you know, the, the, the various sizes of the interior that that he wants to dedicate to certain uses.
That's it, Peter. Thank you.
You're welcome. Susan Milstein, please.
First, I think there's too much going on. I'm really concerned particularly about the traffic circulation between the, the pumps, the drive-through in, in front. I think there's way too much going on there. Is this being built on speculation for tenants or, or is the tenant known or the operators known on this site?
The, the applicant owns other facilities such as this, Susan. Elsewhere in the capital district, I think that he has, I, I want to say either Malta or Clifton Park and, and some other, Bill Fitzgerald, Bill, can you hear me? Are you able to help us out with that question?
Yes.
Hi, Nick. Hi, Bill.
Yeah, so they, they own and operate at least four other stations that I know of locally. One being Malta, another one just south of that exit eleven, Clifton Park, and another one in Albany.
Do you know the name? Is it the same fast food restaurant attached to each one?
No, this would, no, this would be, they run, they run the, the mini marts currently. They are not in the fast food business, but they, and we have been in conversation with, with a fast food chain for over a year. And, and their minimum requirement for space is the two thousand square feet, which is why we have that on there.
So the other ones that you just mentioned, the one in Malta, exit eleven and Clifton Park, do they have a fast food restaurant attached to them or strictly mini mart and gas?
Strictly mini mart and gas.
Okay, so this is a new model then?
Yes, for, for these, for these folks, yes.
Yes, yes, okay. Those are basically my question. And, and the restaurant itself, is there going to be, there are, there'll be the window and then there's sit tables as well?
Yes, yes.
Like dining as well as a drive-through?
Yes.
And I'm concerned about too much being done on not only this size part lot, but in this configuration because it looks like you're trying to do an awful lot. And particularly with this sort of, with the shape of this lot, but that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lou?
Yes, of course, I've got the concern with the curb cut there on Johnson Road. And I think it's a little close to the light also, so I would certainly like to see it move back some. The curb cut over on Columbia, when I was out there today, I noticed back in that area, there's a curb and there's a, I think a slight hill. So if you've got people going out onto that street, you have a line of sight problem right there with with vehicles coming up from the east going west. Is, is, there's six steam filling stations, right? Is that what I see? At the pumps?
Eight.
Eight. Eight, okay, so there's, there's one on each side, eight.
Yep.
I, I have to, I, I think you're putting a lot on this spot. And you know, we've got a high density traffic area here and that's been, that was a big problem with ICO and, and some of the other projects that we've put in across the street. And I, you know, you, you got a small piece of land, you got eight pumps. I'd probably like to see that come down to maybe three pumps. And that's, that's quite a configuration around that building. I, I'd like to see another, a different layout to begin with, and I think I, I really like to see a reduction in the number of pumps. Take a look at those curb cuts, especially the one over, well, we've already talked about Johnson Road, but the one on Columbia Street. Because like I said, Chip and I were both out there today. We saw how the cars were coming up and, and we didn't see the one because of the hill and the curve. So that might be something to take a look at, Nick.
Yep, yep. Thank you, Lou.
Chief Hider?
Yeah, a couple of comments. One, I concerning Joe Grass's comment about the right in, right out on Columbia Street. Everybody knows my feelings on right in, right outs. They're only good until somebody turns a left. Knowing that, working in that area a lot, there's a tremendous amount of morning traffic that goes up. I don't know what direction it is. It's going towards the, the light at the Coliseum Drive. And I can't imagine people, I can't imagine people not taking that left-hand turn into that facility. Nor can I imagine why the facility would want to be built without a left-hand turn there. That's a tremendous amount of customers that I can't see making the turn at the main intersection to turn onto Johnson Road to turn into the building and then have to go back out the same way. So I, I agree with Joe. I think work needs to be done in traffic pattern, but I'm not too sure the right in, right out will work in this location. The devil's in the details with the architecture. We just made the developer go through a tremendous amount of change on the opposite corner. We just gave concept approval to the restaurant and office building over there. on the opposite corner. We just gave concept approval to the restaurant and office building over there. And we we often talked about how this was going to revitalize the corner. Not that I'm against gas stations, but I don't want it to look like a gas station. Whether through landscaping or through some very intricate architecture of the building, I don't want to see this turn into your classic mini mart, fast food, drive through restaurant without an awful lot of architectural detail. The area that Joe talked about, the lane that goes around the building, it's only a single lane initially. So the escape lane doesn't start into the back. Yet they've got five parking spots in the back there that nobody would be able to gain access to if the lane is full of cars. If this is anything like, and I'll keep the names out of it, but the two establishments on Wolf Road, one at the intersection of Shaker and one farther down, their queuing lane queues around an entire building and around almost an entire parking lot, blocking other forms of travel in less space than this or in more space than this. So we've got to be very careful about that and not not knowing who the applicant's tenant is. Other than that, the dumpster, I think, is right in the front yard from the rooks of it on Columbia Street. And as far as banking the parking, I wouldn't bank more than six or seven parking spots at the end of that one area. Because as Joe said, depending on what you put in here, you may need a lot of parking just to satisfy the restaurant. So that's it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I, there's been a lot of good comments made. Joe Grasso probably summarized, raised a lot of issues that I think are significant and this thing may undergo change. I believe he questioned whether a drive through is even appropriate. And perhaps that there's too many gas pumps, that that's something for the board to consider. The stormwater, he suggested, might not be in the right place. Obviously, realignment of the ingress and egress in all the locations are going to be, have to be studied a little bit harder. I tend to agree with the comment, but I'm willing to, you know, listen, that that we're trying to do too much on this site and it's it's an odd shaped site and it's been undeveloped for a long time and maybe, you know, maybe that's why it's because it's a difficult site in some ways. But I think those are all, obviously, the architecture is important, as Chief Hyder and others have pointed out. I guess that's the the end of my comments, but I do I do share those concerns with some of the other board members. You know, perhaps you want to bring it back for another sketch? I don't know.
Yeah, that was just going to ask you if it changes drastically. Do you want me to see if they'll send that for a sketch update?
I I think that would be appropriate.
Okay.
Board agree?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. The third and final item on the agenda, 74A Sparrow Bush Road, Sparrow Bush Conservation Subdivision, Sketch Plan Review of a Proposed 93 Lot Conservation Subdivision of Single Family Homes on 65.5 acres. Four new streets to be constructed. The site is zone office residential. And I will, Zach, do you have any preliminary comments before we turn it over to the applicant?
Yeah, I'll just, this wasn't my project per se, but I'm taking over for it for right now during this meeting. Just what we have written here is a few significant issues are proposed that are not allowed. Single family is not allowed in the office residential district, so a use variance will end up being needed. And it also falls within the conservation development overlay district, so conservation analysis will be required. And the proposed street connectivity to Pollock Road is a potential issue with the site distance analysis along Pollock and and what else we have here and the proposed street connectivity to Sparrow Bush Road in the future. So that's all she has written down for that.
Okay. Nick, Nick, do you have this one as well?
I do. Thank you, Chairman. So this is a 60, almost 66 acre parcel that's located, it has a Sparrow Bush address with Sparrow Bush being down in this area right here. And it was, it's all, it was owned by the same entity and I think that at one time, maybe they were all one, you know, one big parcel back here. But, you know, Tom Burke owns this, you know, purchased this parcel and the 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 site doesn't have access to Sparrow Bush. The only historical access that the site had has was what a judge assigned to the the landowner. When the landowner sued the the landowner that owned, that originally owned this parcel right here, that was that that was, that's being built by Hadarowski's Homes. This is the Pollock Road. Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry. Thanks, Joe. Yeah, thanks, Joe. Bow Meadows, which comes off of Pollock Road. Mr. Spiac owned this parcel, his family owned this parcel and there was a lawsuit and the judge assigned a right for this this parcel to have access to Pollock Road. However, since the Hadarowski has developed Bow Meadows, there there were roads that were built in here, town roads, and one of them provided access to this parcel right where I'm pointing right now. So this this access, you know, the the plan for this access is to do away with it and and the applicant is willing to install sprinkler systems in all these new homes. The reason for putting in this this access point, access road was to satisfy the 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 requirement for having a secondary means out to Pollock Road. But as Joe Bizignano mentioned during our DCC meeting, if the applicant was to consider putting in a sprinkler system through all the homes, he wouldn't, it wouldn't be required. The code doesn't require it. It requires either the sprinkler systems or the access to the a secondary access. So the plan is to, you know, continue, the the terminal drive is constructed to about here currently, that would be extended and and the roadway system would be developed to build these these homes. There is sewer, there is sanitary sewer, there's a town trunk sewer that runs down here in in the and we would be extending the sewer across and down into that, into one of these manholes. And the the water system, there is a water line that comes, just like my pointer is coming along, almost follow, well, it follows the National Grid right away. And and there's been, there's been at least one connection point that was left when this was constructed. You know, the Latham Water, John Fraser has informed us that there was a connection point left on on this line to to make a connection for any future development of this parcel. And in addition to that, it does have water out on the street here. So we would be looping that system to, you know, back into the, into it. Stormwater, you know, we're showing the stormwater being located in this area. There are some ravines and the ravines are these, you know, these symbols right here that are shown. There was a well end delineation done on the site. Let me go to the larger map because it shows the topography. So there there is a stormwater, you know, we would, we would place a stormwater management area here and then discharge it into one of these ravines which discharge out to eventually discharge out to the Pollock River. So that's the proposal. It is, it is a proposal that's that needs a use variance because this this area is zone office residential. And what we're proposing is residential use only. A single family residential only. If we were to do twin townhomes, it wouldn't, it wouldn't need, it would not need a use variance. But I think that since the this area has been developed and is being constructed as a, as a conservation subdivision, I I think that Tom wanted to follow that that theme and 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 keep this residential and I'm not sure that office would really fit in here. You know, maybe when when this was zoned, you know, they used the the Northway on the west side and the east side to, you know, put in the zoning line. And maybe somebody was thinking something like Century Hill could be developed over on this side, but that's not, you know, we don't, you know, we don't think that that's the the proper use of of the of the land here. So that's what Tom would like to do is to develop it as a single family residential with the conservation overlay with the conservation overlay district and and a conservation analysis. But first, I think we've got to go through and and, you know, get the use variance is really, you know, what's what's needed. So if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer them as best as I can.
Okay, our town designated engineers, CCHA companies and companies is reviewing this on behalf of the planning board. Joe Grasso, can you give us your preliminary comments?
Sure, Pete. Thanks. So again, I'm going to start our our comments at a relatively high level and then just work work my way down a little bit. So in terms of the the use, the use of the site, you know, from a zoning standpoint, you know, Nick went into quite a bit of detail about how this is zoned office residential, which doesn't allow single family housing developments in the OR zone and the use variance is is required or or another avenue like a PDD or something. But but from a, and and I don't know if the the planning board needs to weigh in on on the use, but from our perspective, from a planning perspective, we do feel like, given the site's location and environmental constraints and topographical constraints and access constraints, we do think that single family residential development is a more appropriate use than multifamily or commercial office or other other commercial type use. So so we're in favor of the of the proposed single family type development. The site is unique because it is covered by the conservation development overlay zone, which which requires a conservation analysis. And Nick, Nick's office has gone through that, some of that required analysis, you know, already, you know, one of the criteria is developing the maximum number of lots that could be developed based on just mathematical equations and the amount of undeveloped area. And and Nick's calculation shows the maximum allowable density is, I think it's about over 200 units, like 238 units, and and they're proposing 93. So they're significantly less than than that, what that calculation shows. We do think some refinements of of the calculation may be required that may slightly reduce the maximum allowable number of of homes, but it's going to be, you know, we still think it's probably going to be north of 200 lot. So if they're proposing, you know, 93 or less, they're going to be well within what the maximum allowable is. From a open space perspective, though, you know, there are, there are some concerns that we have with how the calculation for the amount of required open space is done. We don't think, even though the plan shows a lot of protected open space and and we're in favor of everything on east side of the National Grid right away being proposed as open space, we we still don't think that it's enough to satisfy the requirements of the concert conservation development overlay zone because you have to take 40% of the unconstrained lands in addition to the same acreage of the constrained lands. And therefore, we think that it requires at least 37 acres of protected open space, which it currently does not show. I think it's showing about 20 acres or so. The other thing that factors into that calculation is is if there are any impacts on constrained lands, which includes the federal wetlands. And you can see the, I'll call it the the stipple dotted areas on the west side of the, you know, National Grid right away, which is, you know, proposed by, you know, all the single family lots. There's a, there's a number of federal wetland areas, although not significant in size individually. Nonetheless, they are protected and if you are going to develop those areas, you have to conserve additional open space at a two, at a two to one ratio. So that's something that could further drive up the required amount of protected open space. Obviously, these areas are constrained for a reason and wetlands are very important from a from an ecological standpoint. And we would like to see a layout that tries to respect those those wetland areas and avoids impacts to them, you know, as much as possible. Probably the biggest single issue regarding this project site really is how, where access comes from. And, you know, if you, for the for the board that was involved in the the long review of the Bout Meadows subdivision, which is just to the northwest of this project site, you may recall extensive discussions and deliberations regarding access, you know, to that project site, which only had frontage on Pollock Road. In the end, that project was approved with one primary access point, which is is shown on Nick's plan here. And we appreciate him showing that the road layout. And then it was, it was also approved with an emergency access connection further to the to the east before you get down to the corner. And and the reason why it was only approved with one primary access point is because there's steep grades, there's poor site, poor site distance. And really, the intent from a, from a regional traffic standpoint is to try to get the traffic not only from the Bout Meadows subdivision, but also this project site, because it was always anticipated that this is a project site would come up for development down to the Sparrow Bush Road corridor and not have the traffic from from these two project sites. You know, you rely on on Pollock Road for access because of the constraints, you know, that I mentioned and just the the more rural character of Pollock Road as composed, as opposed to the Sparrow Bush Road. So when Bout Meadows was approved, there was a stub street connection, which Nick has, you know, shown a connection to which we are supportive of. Not because the intent to take traffic from this new project and push it up through Bout Meadows to Pollock Road, but conversely, just the opposite, you know, the the purpose of that stub street was to allow traffic in the future from Bout Meadows to flow down through this project site and down to Sparrow Bush Road. So that should always be the long term plan for for access. We are aware, though, that this this applicant and this project site does not have rights of access down to Sparrow Bush Road, which is, you know, we consider a critical factor. And and we feel it's it's an important consideration if this project is going to, you know, move forward for development. So that's, you know, I think it's appropriate at this stage of the process, given the the zoning issues, the conservation analysis issues and the access issues that we really stay on those three issues, at least through the sketch plan review and not get into the weeds of the engineering at this point.
Okay, that's a good comment. We'll take comments from the board. Chief Hyder?
Yeah, I I was around for, I think, half the Bout Meadows thing and I guess I must have missed something because I can't imagine those residents who are buying those houses up on Bout Meadows now are all fully aware that there's going to be 90 homes emptying all into their little street every morning and every night. The the project is the project, but I would still be in favor of a connection to Pollock Road, although knowing Pollock Road, I don't know how they're going to do it with the site distances. But you can't predict that this will ever go out to Sparrow Bush Road and only have the one access out into Bout Meadows. I just don't think that's that's appropriate. Other than that, I mean, it's conservation development, so it's small lots, it's a lot of houses, a lot of people with cars. And like I said, I can't imagine that the developers selling those houses about Meadows. A lot of people with cars. And like I said, I can't imagine that the developers selling those houses about Meadows telling those people about the ninety-three new houses, they're gonna be driving past their house to get home at night. So that's the only thing I got.
Okay, Craig.
Thank you. Well, I I for what it's worth, I mean, I I also agree that the houses, houses of some form, residences of some form are what's appropriate here and not office offices. That Paul might have a better sense, but at one point, was Wade Road gonna get extended to Pollock? I mean, I don't know whether that was, maybe that was why it was zoned the way it was. I agree with Chief, that's a it's a lot of house, it's a lot of cars pushed through Bout Meadows. What is this, what's the size of that you're proposing of these lots, Nick? And then just.
They're similar to uh the Bout Meadows. They they range from um uh eight thousand to fifteen thousand, I think it is.
Most of them are eight or nine, eight, nine, ten, though.
Yeah, yeah.
And and I don't remember exactly, but I thought that Bout was a little bit more toward the mid-teens. So I mean, seems like these are smaller. Bottom line is, I think maybe you've got and and obviously Joe's concerned about some of your calculations, but I I think you've got way too many houses here. Um I agree with Chief. I mean, there's no they men, this may never connect up to Sparrow Bush, and there may even be some topo issues to get it to connect to Sparrow Bush. I mean, some of that land looks pretty steep. Um I mean, I guess there's probably a path, but um yeah, there is. I guess that's about it.
Okay. Thank you, Craig.
Susan?
I don't have much to add. I agree that it's, I I think it'd be really unfair to for these, the other the other um development to have all these cars going through there. And you can't assume that there is going, you have to assume that there is no access to Sparrow Bush. So, you know, I have to say.
That's a difficult problem, yeah.
Right. So I don't have anything else.
Okay.
My concerns are the same that uh have just been mentioned. I really don't recall um that road going from Bout Meadows. I don't recall that even being mentioned at the when we were looking at Bout Meadows. But I also have the concern of going down to Pollock because of the uh site distance and and what have you, and the way that's the traffic that's on that road to begin with. So I agree with the all the other comments.
Paul Rosano?
Uh, this is for Nick or Joe. Could you zone in on lots one and forty-seven, they're side by side? Is that a dead-end street there?
Uh, yes, it's a future, that's that's intended to be a future connection to Sparrow Bush Road. You know, uh i- if uh if that road gets extended, uh you know, the the likelihood it's it's gonna get extended through through here out to Sparrow Bush.
Okay, how would we uh, how would highway be able to get in there to snowplow if it's uh, if it's not some sort of a keyhole or something that for they can make a turnaround? How are they gonna do that without going on private property? To to remove the snow?
Oh, okay. I I see what you're saying. Uh, you know, you're you're right. That that lot number one may may only be developed once the road is extended. I'm sorry, that that's, you 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 you're right. You know, this this is this is really a T, you know, uh and then when the road gets extended, lot number one would be uh built.
Okay, so you're, this is all based upon future that uh at some point that the rest of the property will be.
Yeah.
Still OR though, for a distance beyond that, and then it turns into SFR. I mean, this is probably, as I said before, this is one of the craziest areas of town. You've got you've got three zoning districts sitting side by side by side. You can stand in the corner behind the houses on Oxford Drive. And if you, your left foot will be an MFR, you you look straight ahead and you're an SFR, and if you look to your right, you're an OR. I I I can't believe this. I mean, I know this is all part of the Wade Roach mannequins from years ago, but but this is a tough one. Um I don't want, I don't want to say much more because I know it's gotta go to ZBA, so I'll just let it go with that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Chip?
Yeah, um I'd say if you're gonna lose some lots, it'd be uh be ten through uh nineteen because the uh or nine through nineteen because I would think not many people wanna build a house that backs right onto a high tension wire. I know when we're looking, we we bypassed several lots that because they weren't actually in view or close to high tension wire. So that's what I would, that's what I'd do if you had to lose some of the lots.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um I I have a couple of questions. Uh Joe Grasso, um do you agree that these lots are comparably sized to Bout Bout Meadows?
Uh, I, my recollection is they are a little bit smaller. I thought that we were in a ten to fourteen thousand square foot range. But I'm only going by memory.
Okay.
I think they're a little bit smaller.
Peter was not, yeah.
Peter, it's, I looked at it always, it's nine thousand to twenty-four thousand.
Okay, in this one, this one or the other one?
No, this one we're looking at right here.
Okay, thank you. Um Joe, Bout Meadows was va- a voluntary conservation subdivision. It wasn't conservation overlay. Am I correct about that?
Correct.
That's my recollection. So this happens to be in the overlay district?
No, it's not.
Oh, so it's a con- it's just a conservation subdivision?
Yeah, we we were gonna, we were gonna uh do a a similar um development as as it's being done adjacent to it.
Okay, understood. In a way, it's a terminology thing, because I don't, I don't think conservation overlay is the right terminology. I think it's just conservation subdivision.
Yes, I agree with you that uh it it should, I might have misspoke when I said overlay.
Okay. If Joe's right about the calculation, this thing is gonna be significantly different once the calculation's corrected, because you have twenty acres and Joe thinks you need thirty-seven.
Right.
So in a way, we're, in a way, this is premature, if that's if that's correct. And obviously, the the access issues are uh problematic as well. So um you know, those are a lot of issues. I mean, I appreciate you coming in, but I I think this is gonna be substantially changed.
Hey, Pete?
Yeah.
No, this is, I'm I'm looking at the map and and the uh, no, this is in the conservation development overlay district.
Was was Bout Bout Meadows as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's it's clearly in it, yeah.
So that's what's driving it. Okay, okay.
Sorry about that.
I actually pulled the file for Bout Meadows. You had houses' size is down to about eighty-three hundred square foot, and the largest got up to about sixteen thousand. You're you're, they're a little bit smaller than what they are showing now, you know, the the median average is about eleven thousand square foot. But they are, there are some smaller ones.
Okay, we'll we'll have to look at them side by side to make sure it works. Um you know, so I I I've heard some feedback on on Bout that the uh buildings are too, some people think the buildings are too big for the small size of the lots and I, you know, if it if I agree with that, and I've been through it a few times, it's under construction now, so things are gonna grow up and it may look different. But I think, you know, if we didn't get it quite right that there, I I would like to get it right here. Because I don't know if the topography is the same, but a lot of those have walkout basements. So i- if you look at at them from the rear yard, which you can't help to do if you if you circulate around, they're pretty, they're pretty tall buildings, and they look a little oversized from certain angles uh on those lots.
Peter, I think what happened, if I could just interject.
Yeah.
I think if you look at Bout Meadows, you looked at what the demand was, and we're the builder, I think, figured he was gonna spilt a lot build a lot of sixteen hundred square foot houses.
Yeah.
People came in and there's a lot of three thousand square foot houses. Built on nine thousand square foot lots, you know, so that's what makes them look so tight together.
Right, and that may be. Um but I think we should consider uh maybe restricting the building size.
Right.
Or decreasing lot sizes.
The other, the other thing, if I remember correctly, about Bout Meadows is that some of the lots, at least, had some conservation area in and around them, right? What i- in that center circle in inside that center circle, I believe there was a a conservation area. So the backyards of some of those houses looked would appear appreciably bigger than what we're talking about here, where they're more or less right on top of one another. And all the conservation area is very much removed from where the houses would be. So.
How many lots are there in Bout Meadows?
Eighty-two, eighty.
Thirty?
Zach's counting, I think.
Yeah.
Forty, forty, I think the total was uh forty, forty.
Forty-three, forty-two, forty-three, I thought.
How many, Zach?
Forty-three. There there, so to get to Craig's portion, there's one along Landmark Street and Origin Drive. In the middle of those areas, there's a conservation area um that's about ten thousand square feet between all the houses.
Okay, so it's not that big.
Just one extra one.
But it is still there.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I I I don't have any further comment. Does anybody else?
Just a, just a question. Would we be able to uh at least make the application to the ZBA for uh the use variance?
You know, that it's sort of a legal question. I don't know. I don't know, you know, or or maybe it's a policy question, too. I'm not sure how to respond to that.
I thi- I think the the best answer for that is if you go to the ZBA with X amount of houses and it cha- you just don't wanna have a change going back to the.
Right, right, right. But I I don't know that um we need to um you know, have a a certain number of of houses, because we're, what we're asking is for.
Correct.
Yes, yeah.
Hey, Pete and Zach, it's Sean here. I was able to join in.
Hi, Sean.
Hey, Sean.
What we would recommend to the applicant is that, you know, take the feedback from this meeting and then go back to the Z, you know, if they wanna move to the ZBA, um you know, bring that application to them uh with what they think is the is is the max density here based on the planning board's feedback. So in in some ways, there's a bit of a you know, a a best guess based on, you know, what they've heard tonight. But um, you know, in order for this proceed further, we're going to need some some action by um an- another board that the planet, because the planning board can't obviously handle this piece.
Thank you, Sean.
Yeah, Pete, this is uh, but for for history, this is exactly how the the Loopy Way subdivision was, which, you know, we got into a pretty extensive um, you know, subdivision review because it had to go back to the ZBA for a zoning change. That was, that was a zoning change, not a uh use variance, but but similar thing where the planning board, you know, wanted to feel comfortable regarding, you know, the the overall density and layout and access before the uh, at that time, it was the town board felt comfortable granting his own change. And in this, in this case, it would be the, you know, the ZBA having to grant the use variance.
Okay, I do wanna make one other comment, which is um if it ends up being the conservation analysis is is along the lines of Joe Grasso, and and the number of lots ends ends up being something like halved. You know, this makes this comparable to the to Bout Meadows. And I think the connection is more logical if that's the case. At least that's my initial thought.
I agree.
I agree with that, yeah.
Yep.
Joe, your initial calculation, it was, was it off by that much?
Well, the, I I don't, I'm not sure if we're gonna get there from a a density requirement limitation. I I think what we're hearing is there's concern regarding the the density as it's proposed.
Right.
Uh and the and the number of trips uh that it's going to create, you know, and where those trips are gonna go. But I don't, I don't, you know, we're we're going to, I think, when we go through the calculation correctly, I think we're gonna require more open space, which obviously could affect some lots.
It's gotta affect lots, Joe, because you you take out uncon- you take out constrained land. And then the calculation on the number of lots.
Yeah, yeah, assuming uh assuming that we don't take the lot sizes any any lower than they already are, you're correct.
No, no, even the count, even the count. You take out the unconstrained land and then you do the calcula- you take out the constrained land, then you do the calculation.
Yeah, yeah.
If you're, if you're saying there has to be seventeen more acres, that's gonna affect that in a very dramatic way.
Yeah.
We've been through it.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Okay, if there are no objections, we we shall stand adjourned.
Thank you.